All right, good evening, everyone. We'll ask that everyone would please rise as we call on the Reverend Dr. Douglas Dent to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Legion. Good evening, Dr.
Let us pray. God of all life, you call us to live in community and teach us to care for one another after the pattern of Jesus Christ, your Son, our Savior. We pray for those whose position and authority affect the lives of others. We ask that you inspire them with a vision of our community as it might be, where love of neighbor and concern for one another drive out discontent and strife, anxiety, and fear. We pray, too, that you would help us all to work together with one heart and will, with sympathy and understanding, to serve the common good, to minister to those in trouble and despair, and to multiply true happiness among us. This we ask through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, May 3, 2021, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Fish? Fish? Jim Fish, are you here? Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yes. Hank Berg, Anthony Davis, Absinthe, Condon.
Here.
And you see Rupert. Rupert?
We have a quorum. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, for any additions or corrections. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. We do not have any changes to the agenda this evening.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion accepting the agenda as presented.
I'll have that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. All in... Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Cassison. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Rupert.
Here. Yes, sorry. Monday.
That motion is approved. There are no public hearings this evening under a wording of bids. Tonight, we have one bid to award, and we're looking for a resolution toward the bid for Public Improvement 9768, which is the Downtown Riverfront Enhancement and Stabilization Project. And I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. It's an exciting day. We're at a major milestone and a big project for the community, and it's been a long time coming. So I'm happy to be here this evening to introduce this topic after nearly four years of work on this project and even more if you count the master plan. So I'm excited to see this moving forward. I just wanted to quickly appreciate and thank all of those who worked so hard on this, the public who came forward, participated in one or several of the many engagement sessions we had over the last several years, the design development process, all of the hard work that went into it from staff, our consultant, and the hundreds of members of the public that stepped forward and provided their feedback and opinions. It really made this project what it is, and that's much appreciated. As you all know, the goal of this project is and has been to enhance the downtown, embrace the riverfront, and provide quality of life and recreational opportunities in the community. I think the proposed project does just that. This project has been the number-one priority for this council and the previous councils, and it's fun to be able to stand here tonight and be this close to making it a reality. So I just wanted to, again, thank our community partners. Otter Tail Power is making a substantial investment in this area on their own behalf and to further this project. There are several donors that are involved in this project, a lot of community partners, and just really exciting time for Fergus Falls. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian Yvaro to walk through the bids that we received and talk about that, which is the action we're looking for tonight to award a bid. And then Finance Director Bill Sonmore will walk through the finances of the project for all of you, and then we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Andrew. I echo your sentiments about it being an exciting night along a long journey. So good evening, Brian.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Your Mayor and members of the council. On April 20, 2:00 p.m., sealed bids were open for this project. We received two bids at the time of the closing. The apparent low bidder was Comstock Construction of Minnesota with a base bid amount of $3,028,400. Myself and city staff, we evaluated the bids and determined that Comstock bid was, in fact, responsive. With the proposal, we included seven bid alternates that consisted of picking tables, dumpster enclosures, an irrigation system along with electrical water heating, and overhead door closers for the marketplace structure. These seven alternates added up to about $185,000. So if accepted, we're looking to award the construction services contract to Comstock Construction in an amount of $3,213,600. This is the base bid plus the seven alternates. So I'll mention if approved, the next step would be to hold a preconstruction meeting and establish the schedule. Construction could begin in the coming month with substantial scheduled this fall and final of the following summer. Not only with the preconstruction meeting, we plan a meeting with adjacent business owners and, of course, private utility companies such as Otter Tail Power because they do have some substantial relocations associated with this project. I just want to know, in efforts to maintain access for local businesses, this project that we're doing on the West Block does have a demarcation line included that the contractor must abide by. This line indicates that essentially the north half of the parking lot is to remain undisturbed until substantial completion on the south side, where the plaza areas along the river is being constructed. Once they've agreed that, then we'll allow full reconstruction of the parking lots per the plans. I do want to know if there will be some relocations at Otter Tail Power to facilitate some of this work. But given the complexity and location of the project, we want to thank you in advance for your patience and cooperation. We will be updating the project website on the city's homepage and provide key contact information during the construction of this project. So at this time, I'm going to turn over to Bill Sonmore from Finance. He's just going to give you an overall budget in regard to this contract and as a whole.
Thank you for that, Brian. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Your Honor and council. Good to be here tonight, like we said, too, and get to the point where we have bids in front of us. You've handed out, and for those of you on Zoom, we did email a link to you, to the budget that we're handing out here tonight. So we are looking at, in front of you, one option that has a prefabricated bridge in this project. There was some talk, you know, throughout this process about a historic bridge, but looking at costs to make this project as most manageable as possible at this time, we're going to look at that prefab bridge. Now, if something could come together later where we could get a historic bridge in this same price range, you know, looking at that, then we'll look at that. But what's before you tonight here is the prefab bridge version. So along with this, of course, bids came in higher than what we expected when we went in with our estimates, but when engineering looked at the bids that we did receive, they were very comparable. So that tells us we did receive good bids because you have two different companies bidding reasonably close to each other. So the first page within this packet explains the entire project. Now, for your consideration tonight, is the bid for the West Block or Phase One? But we put together a budget for you for the entire project over a couple of years so you can see how this lays out in total. Starting at the top, we have costs incurred to date. We have spent $850,000 through today on designing and developing this entire project. So, of course, that's first on the list of the costs that we have. And then we have the West Block cost there, which includes the bid and then all the construction, engineering, and monitoring that would go on along with that. The East Block is in there, too, at that $1,365,000, and then the prefabricated bridge at $435,400. And that's part of the second phaser within the East Block because that's located behind here, behind City Hall. So it's a total project for these two blocks of $6,873,564. So the funding sources for this, we were awarded $1,750,000 through the state bonding process. You do have to have an equal match for that, and that's that next section below, and we can see we'll have more than enough match for that. But we also have the Vaden Charitable Trust that has pledged $700,000 to this project. We have private fundraising for $300,000 we're looking at, the two Rotary Clubs, each putting in one for the market structure and the other towards the splash pad of $50,000 and $80,000 respectively. And then West Central Initiative, we've already received a $5,000 grant from them. That's a subtotal of fundraising of $1,135,000. And then we were also awarded an LCCMR grant of $600,000 for the trail and the bridge that's within this entire project. That leaves a balance of city funding of $3,388,564. So that's about 50% of this project, which is not unusual in a large project like this. This is a large redevelopment project, and if you looked at other cities, I'm not surprised that we come in at that amount of city sources. Now, you'll notice I say "city fundings." This will be bond, some municipal, state aid, and other, and we'll go through those in the following pages. So if you want to flip to page two, we broke this down by year. So the first construction, Phase One for 2021, that's what we're talking about here tonight, that entire project plus the cost to date. Some of those costs certainly belong to Phase Two as well, but since we've already paid them, we have them in the funding structure under the first year. So that's West Block and cost to date of $5,073,164. Our funding sources for that would be using the state bonding dollars all this year of $1.75 million. Our match would be made up of some general municipal state aid for streets that would go towards part of the parking lot on the West Block, which, had we not been doing this project, we would have probably been using that same funding source to work on that parking lot as well. Then the West Central Initiative grant we talked about, the private fundraising of $300,000. I split that in between the two years. There's no magic there, just 150 this phase, 150 the next phase. Rotary for the market structure, $50,000, leaving a city bonding amount of $2.3 million, so $2,351,164. You can see we have more than enough match to supply for that state bonding that we were awarded. And then we have the LCCMR grant of $600,000. The deadline for use of that is June of 2022, so just a little over a year away, and that's already an extended deadline on that because of COVID, so we do need to use that by that time. So that's the 600. Phase Two, then, becomes a bit smaller at $1.8 million, using some MSA again, municipal state aid for streets for the parking lot, then on that East Block. Then that's where the Vaden Trust funds come in at $700,000, the other half of the fundraising of 150,000, and the rotary for the splash pad then at $80,000, leaving a balance of $707,400 in city bonds. So those are highlighted in green, the city bond portion, so that you can see totals down at $3,058,564. So that's, you know, the figure we need to balance this out. Then we started looking at what could we afford to pull from our liquor store. So we looked at where we are at today, and, of course, we've already committed funds to some other projects, but beyond that, we looked at we could take $400,000 towards this project to help bring that bonding down. And then looking at the American Rescue Plan, we have been informed we're going to receive a little over $1.5 million. I think we should get the first half of that in probably June. We're not for sure on the exact timing and Treasury guidance on that, but we're looking at earmarking $500,000 of that as the city's stimulus plan to get that money to work in the community through the use of contractor working right here and getting people to work. So that brings the bonding need down to about $2.1 million. Of course, we will continue to seek further funding as well as we see things come available. Again, you're acting on the bid tonight, but we wanted to show you this broad picture of this, and when we would come back with a financing plan, we would, you know, dial that in and with our bonding people as well. And if you turn over to the last page, this is a projection of what does that bonding look like. We have three scenarios there, if you did a 10-year, a 15-year bond, or a 20-year bond. We typically look at 15-year bonds for infrastructure-type improvements. That's what we do for our street projects. So I'm going to center in on that center column. So we have a project estimate for the bonds of $2.1 million like we talked about. You have issuance costs, you have underwriters' costs there, brings it up to 2.25, 2.225, excuse me, estimating an interest rate of 1.6%. Still, we're in very low rates, so that's also a good time to get your bonding done now. We don't know where rates will go in a year, two years, whatnot, but even 1.6 is a little bit higher than it is as of today, but building in a little factor for change, would make an annual payment of about $168,000. Now, if you go down, what would that mean in a levy and how would that impact the taxpayer? And if you look at a $250,000 house, which is pretty average nowadays for Fergus, it's about $33 a year. So, you know, I think that looks pretty good. I do recommend this finance plan to you. I feel good about this. You, as a council, have worked hard over the last number of years, building a project together. We've laid a good plan, and I think now is the time to do it. So there's the finance plan.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Andrew, Brian, Barry. Thanks to everyone for all the staff for all the work on this. Just to kind of reiterate a couple of the points that were mentioned, there are good bids, right? We've got two competitive bids. They're probably higher than we'd like, but that's the market that we're in right now with the cost of materials. And I also want to just point out the fact that it's a local contractor that we're looking towards this bid, and the local contractor is using local subs. So this money is going to be reinvested in the community, it's going to be creating local jobs. I think that's important. It's going to be investing in the infrastructure of our downtown, and it's going to be supporting our locally-owned businesses. And that's something that we've identified as the number-one priority of this council and of previous councils, and I think it's time to move forward. I'm excited for tonight. Staff's put together a... Thank you, staff, not only for your considerations of just the partnerships that you've built, but also just the financing and being considerate of all the changes that have come about over the last four years. This has been a project that we started more than four years ago with the Downtown Master... Five years ago now, five years ago this summer. So... And I just ask, you know, if we're not willing to invest in ourselves, as Bill mentioned, it's been, I don't know if you've mentioned, but it's been since 1989 is the last time we did a downtown project. We didn't use any bonding for that project, and if we're not going to invest... We've talked about the downtown, we've talked about the importance of revitalizing downtown, investing in our local businesses, and if we're not going to invest in ourselves, how in the world do we expect others to invest theirselves and their businesses and their livelihoods in our downtown? So I believe in this project wholeheartedly. We've come a long ways, and I'm just really excited tonight that we're finally taking the step to move this project forward. So with that, any questions or comments from the council? I guess we look to somebody to introduce a resolution toward the bid to Comstock Construction for Public Improvement.
219768.
219768.
I'll have that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second that.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments from the council? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Cassison. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, guys. Thank you, staff, everyone, for all their hard work on that. Next item on the agenda, under Petitions and Communications, we have a proclamation declaring May as Nurses Month. I believe this was brought forward by Councilmember Rupert, and I will read from this proclamation. Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, and whereas the depth and the breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, and whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of a healthcare system and consumers in this community, and whereas cost-effective, safe, high-quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an increasingly important component of the Fergus Falls healthcare delivery system, and whereas along with the American Nurses Association and the Minnesota Nurses Association, the city of Fergus Falls recognizes May as Nurses Month with the theme of "You Make a Difference," an nod to nurses' sheer numbers, their unparalleled impact during the pandemic and healthcare crisis, and an open invitation to #ThankANurse for enriching our lives and the world we live in. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Benjamin Shire, ask that all residents of Fergus Falls join me in honoring the registered nurses who care for all of us, and be it further resolved that the residents of Fergus Falls celebrate registered nurses' accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show our appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during this month, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Thank you to all the nurses in the community. They've really shown who they are this last year, and we're proud of them, and we're proud of all of our healthcare workers, and particularly our nurses this month. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. There are 11 items. If there's anyone who would like to discuss any of those items individually, we'll remove them. Scott?
Item one, please.
Item one? Okay. And then I'm also going to remove item four just real briefly, if that's all right. Anything else? See, none others there. The other nine can be approved through a resolution?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second that. Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Item number one is a motion approving the open and closed minutes from April 19, 2021. And Scott, did you have a question or clarification on that?
It actually also includes the minutes from our most recent committee of the whole meeting on April 28.
28, sorry, I didn't.
And that meeting, I don't have an issue with the results of the meeting or anything like that, but I just wanted to draw some attention to something that I thought was worthwhile. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has suggested increasing the fees that we pay them as a city to do what they do incredibly... Just, I thought it was a misprint. The fees are apparently collected on a five-year period, and it has been $400 for five years. And now the proposed fees are going to go to $20,000. Well, it hasn't been approved yet. As I understand it, it's in the proposal stage still, but for a bureaucracy to raise their fees from $400 to $20,000 by edict and mandate, I just think we need to pay attention to this sort of thing and push back on it, and this seemed to be an opportunity to voice that concern.
Sure. Thanks, Scott. And with that, I guess we would look to a motion approving the minutes from the last council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Cassison. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number one is a motion approving the open and closed minutes from April 19, 2021. And Scott, did you have a question or a clarification on that?
It actually also includes the minutes from our most recent committee of the whole meeting on April 28.
28, sorry, I didn't.
And that meeting, I don't have an issue with the results of the meeting or anything like that, but I just wanted to draw some attention to something that I thought was worthwhile. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has suggested increasing the fees that we pay them as a city to do what they do incredibly... Just, I thought it was a misprint. The fees are apparently collected on a five-year period, and it has been $400 for five years. And now the proposed fees are going to go to $20,000. Well, it hasn't been approved yet. As I understand it, it's in the proposal stage still, but for a bureaucracy to raise their fees from $400 to $20,000 by edict and mandate, I just think we need to pay attention to this sort of thing and push back on it, and this seemed to be an opportunity to voice that concern.
Sure. Thanks, Scott. And with that, I guess we would look to a motion approving the minutes from the last council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Cassison. Yes.
Fish. Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
That motion is approved. And on item four, I just wanted to just draw some attention to the dog park. And Guy, when is the dog park expected to be open and running, open for business?
We're hoping for early to mid-June.
Early to mid-June, yeah. Just wanted to draw some attention to that and thank those, the park board, the volunteers, city staff, everyone. I know that's something that people have talked about for a number of years and something that I'm excited about, I'm excited to see in the community, so just wanted to recognize that. And then also, of course, it's the action tonight, is this the resolution naming that park as Higgins Dog Park? And just for Higgins' sake, Higgins was the Adam's family dog, just for his sake. You don't get a park named after you every day, so I just wanted to recognize Higgins in that effort. So good job, Higgins. And we can do this by resolution?
I'll have that.
Thank you, Caroline.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Cassison. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under Ordinances and Resolutions, tonight, we have the first reading of the Ordinance 7/8 Series, which amends the City Code, Chapter 31.08, regarding interim emergency succession. And I see Sparky Hovland's here. Good evening, Sparky. Long time no see.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor and council members. I'm Mark Hovland, the Chair of the Charter Commission. And last fall, we met, and one of the items that came up is what would happen if all the members of the council were gone and were unable to serve? How would we have a plan to get back up into doing business for the city? So we looked through the charter, and we could not find a provision that would have that, and we also looked through some other city charters, and they were kind of silent on that fact. But with some research, Rolf came back with, in the City Code, it did address this. And then what you see here on this ordinance change, you'll see some red language, it's talking about nuclear attack, but the Charter Commission went through this ordinance, the City Code, and changed the wording and went through it and tried to make it fit our needs, what we were looking for. So what you have in front of you is we changed with the bold print, the dark is catastrophic event, and crossed out nuclear event. So we made it more broader. And one other part that we did put in there was the Charter Commission members, if the council was unavailable to get together and make any action, that the Charter Commission would step in and try to get things going and make appointments and things like that. I don't know if we need to go through this line by line, but just a few questions.
Sure. Well, thanks, Sparky, for updating us on that, and then also just thanks to you and the rest of the Charter Commission for the work that you do to put that in. So this is a first reading, so we just need someone to introduce it, and then if anyone does have any questions for Sparky, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. Would someone like to introduce this?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Does anyone have any questions for Sparky or for the Charter Commission? Okay, it's been a cheers. Thank you, Sparky. Item number two is a second reading of Ordinance 12/8 Series, which is ordering the vacation of the Highland Avenue right-of-way in Gutenberg Heights addition and part of the Pioneer Road in the Village Cooperative addition. This has been before the council, it's had its first reading. If anyone has any questions, we will direct them to our city attorney. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Cassison. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Foye.
Yes.
That resolution.
Yes.
That ordinance, I'm sorry. That ordinance is approved. Uh, item number three is a resolution introducing a land sale for the property located on Southview Drive, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. Um, the Ballwigs, who reside at 2306 Southview Drive, approached the city about purchasing a portion of the undeveloped city-owned property between their home and the city's water reservoirs, uh, for construction of a private shop or garage for their own use. Um, in exploring that request, we've determined that a market price, uh, for the parcel proposed, which is just around two acres, is about $35,000. Um, the Ballwigs have surveyed the area, and they've established a legal description and boundary for the proposed transaction, and, um, if the transaction were to move forward, it would be combined with their existing residential parcel, becoming one parcel. Um, any building that goes on that property will have to comply with city zoning ordinances, and, um, the use would have to comply as well. So, um, the way the city charter reads is that if the city is gonna be selling property, it needs to happen at two separate meetings with 10 days in between. So if the council wishes to proceed with this, um, transaction, I would recommend that you pass a resolution this evening introducing this land sale to the Ballwigs, and then we can take action on it at our next meeting two weeks from tonight. Um, I just want to note, the city does not have any future plans for this undeveloped property, and given the utility, uh, situation up in that area, it's very unlikely that there's, uh, many qualified buyers for this type of property, but the public certainly has a chance over the next two weeks to, uh, express their concern or interest with this proposed transaction.
Thank you, Andrew. And with that, we would, uh, look for a resolution to introduce this land sale.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Andrew? Roll, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Arneson. Yes.
Yep.
Fish.
Yes.
Foody.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Tonight, under the presentation of claims, we have claims in the amount of $692,911 and 38 cents. If we have any questions, we'll direct them to Bill Sonmore, the Finance.
I move we pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that one.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Cassison. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Foody.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. There are no staff or administrative officer reports, and there is no old or unfinished business that I'm aware of, as well as there is no new business that I'm aware of. Lynn, do you have any announcements other than the announcement of our next committee, the whole meeting on May 12th at 7:00 AM and city council meeting May 17th? Anything else to? That's it? Anything else to come before the council? We're adjourned.